And everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and give honor to each council member and ask God just to help us today. Lord, in Jesus' name, God, we thank you for the great leaders of our city. God, we thank you for all their sacrifices and their hard work. And I pray a blessing upon them today that you would bless the proceedings of this meeting, that you would give favor and wisdom, God, and guidance according to your will and your purpose and your plan. Let the glory of God be revealed, and bless everyone that is in this proceeding, God. Have your way today to the glory of God, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Vickery. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames here.
Mayor Protem Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Neal absent. Councilmember Pate. Councilmember Samuel. And Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Need two seconds. We have two agendas. You may remember, we did not have a meeting last week, unfortunately, due to the winter ice storm. And I think we're pretty, gonna be pretty close to what we had on last week, but I want to make sure I get to the right one. Okay, we don't have any proclamations or presentations today. So now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comments. Are they all, are they all available for public comment, I think? Are they, councilman? Councilmember? Yeah, okay, no action items, but, so we'll open up the microphone at the end of the meeting. We really don't have any action items today. Want to make sure I was looking at it right. But now would be the time for any citizen who would like to speak on the consent agenda. The time to do so is now.
I don't have any, Mayor.
Thank you, there being no one. Counsel, is there a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I did fail to mention that Councilmember Neeld will not be in attendance today. Okay, first item, please.
Mayor and counsel, we're going to go through ten discussion items with you today. And various staff members and myself will come forward and lead them. And after we go through each item, encourage you, as a part of each item, ask any and all questions that you have. That's the purpose of today's meeting. And the first discussion item is to review and discuss the city's street rehabilitation program. And Bart Barcoiak, our Public Works Director, will come forward.
Good afternoon. So, back in 2011, we had EMS come in and do a street index for the city. When they did that, they rated the overall condition of the streets in the city at a sixty-three pavement condition index. And at that time, they told us we needed to spend, you know, I believe roughly six to eight million dollars a year on street rehab in order to make some progress along the way. So, it's been a little drag. We, they drove the streets again in August of 2020, but due to COVID, they've had some difficulty getting us the results of that. So we finally got some response back from them. I don't have all the details today, however, I have an overview where the overall PCI score as of now is a sixty-seven. So, we've gone from a sixty-three to a sixty-seven, which is an improvement due to the fact that we've invested in doing street rehab. And they recommend that we put eight million dollars a year into street rehab that would then allow us to gradually improve to a sixty-nine over the next five years, if we do so. And I'm gonna hand out a chart. So this gives you a curve that shows various investment options.
Thank you, Mayor.
In the street rehab over the next five years. Where that puts us. So the recommendation in question is that kind of green curve that goes up. And that's the eight million dollars a year to get us continuing to improve. And I'll take any, any questions, y'all.
Have a question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Bart, because the viewing audience cannot see the chart.
Sure.
Would you please explain on the chart if, if we did a fix-all?
And then explain where the money's coming from.
Yeah, and then explain.
If we fixed everything in the next five years, that'd be three hundred and eighteen point two million dollars. Yes, ma'am. Out of our grasp, I'm afraid. But that, that is what it would take just to fix everything immediately, basically.
Other questions, counsel? Councilmember Getz?
Okay, so there's two green lines, one lighter green line and one darker green line. The lighter one being at the top. Would you explain the difference between the two?
The lighter green line is the effect if you spend eleven, just over eleven million dollars a year.
And that would take us to roughly a seventy-three?
Yeah, in that range, seventy-two and a half, seventy-three.
Is there a number that, I mean, obviously, we'd love to be at a hundred, I guess. So, have you looked at comparable-sized cities and tried to evaluate where Beaumont stands? Or does this allow you to do that? They, they would have to have, I guess, the same sort of a index prepared.
I could ask God in the house if they've done studies of equivalent cities and what their ratings are. But no, I don't really have a good idea of, say, Waco and what their road condition assessment is, or if they've done one.
Would you do that? I think that would be useful information to have, because I, I can tell you that I have driven roads in Houston. And I'll put our roads in Beaumont against some of the roads in Houston any day of the week. And I'm talking some of the major thoroughfares in Houston. There's, those roads are torn up. And of course, they have a lot of traffic on them, but, you know, we have made some strong, steady strides to improve our, our roads here in Beaumont, and it's, it's obviously showing here. So, thank you.
And I think it's important to note, too, we haven't just taken the bond money. We've also had oil and gas money that got poured into roads. We've also had some FHWA money that got put into roads after Harvey. And we also had some CDBG funds that are now getting put into roads. So, we're trying to take advantage of all the avenues possible to, to do road rehabilitation in the city. And we're also doing some in-house, smaller work, but, but additional streets that wouldn't necessarily fit into a large rehab program.
Well, I personally have noticed that there's crews out there fixing curbs that are broken. And I guess we're doing that in-house?
There, it's a bit of both. We, we have used contractors for curbs, but we also do curb repair in-house, yes.
All right, thank you.
If I may, y'all might remember that, not this past November, but the one before, I was invited to participate in a smart cities program. And one of the topics of conversation, probably one of the largest topics of conversation, were the PCI in the different cities and what they were striving to do, what they were able to do. And obviously, every city has a challenge with funding. But what I found was that most were setting goals each year of the PCI they wanted to get to, rather than just saying, this is where we are. But they were setting goals. And I, I think that when I, when I looked at that, now, obviously, some of these cities were younger cities than we are. And if it's a younger city, their PCI is gonna automatically be better, because their streets are newer. But, and also on the size of the city. But I was, I was seeing, which kind of surprised me, a lot of them in the sixties. And, and this is across the nation, this just isn't Texas. This was a nationwide event. And they were in the sixties and seventies, but they were striving to be, some of them at seventies, some of them at eighty. But I didn't see any above eighty percent, unless it was a, you know, a very brand. You know, we've got some in Texas that are just now incorporated and everything's basically new. They don't even have old parts of town. So, that would make a difference, obviously. But I just wanted to make that comment, because it was interesting to me. And the conference was an invitation. City didn't pay nationally, they paid for me nationally to go. And I, I thought it was just extremely interesting that most cities are below or at the same level as us. And I would bet that Houston is quite a bit below, based on what Councilmember Getz said. I had someone just recently that lives in Houston said, you know, they couldn't believe how much different the streets are here, even in the older neighborhoods than they are like that in Houston. So I'm not saying it's all right. We certainly want to strive to make it better and better. But I think sometimes we need to tutor on horn and say, you know what? We've done this and we're, you know, we're consistently doing this. You can see us out there doing it. And, and maybe look at some goals for the future.
And we are on an improvement curve, so it's important that we're, we're not falling behind.
Right.
Due to y'all's support, we're able to make up ground. And to, to give kind of a, an idea here, too, Councilwoman Muton had asked about making everything up. And you see that it doesn't go to a hundred in that case. You really don't get to a hundred on the scale. Even if you do a brand-new road, you're, you're liable to have it rated out at a pavement condition index around ninety, maybe a little above ninety. In general, when we're looking at things on when to redo a road, anything sixty and above is generally considered decent condition. We'll might do a little rehab or potholes or small patches in our streets department. But we're generally shooting at those that are falling under sixty for full rehab. So that kind of gives you a gauge. If your roads are sixty and above, they're generally in decent condition.
Exactly, and that's the point I was trying to make. And that's where the majority of those mayors were in that, in that meeting. There was probably about ten, fifteen of us there.
Right.
Councilmember Samuel, then Councilmember Pate?
Okay. So, when we talk about the index rating, percentage, is that a median or is that a average?
That's the average rating across all concrete and asphalt roads in the city, is what this is.
And the dark green is spending eight million per year?
Yes.
That would keep us where we, where we are?
Well, it'll let us gradually increase over the next five years.
Okay.
So it'll give us some improvement.
And the light green is if we were to increase from eight million to eleven million?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Pate?
Thank you, Mayor. Bart, to give people an idea, how many hundreds of miles of roads we have in Beaumont? A lot of times, you know, people drive the same routes, going to the same places. But I don't think they, not everybody has a concept of just how many roads and streets in miles we have.
Yeah, I think there's eight hundred and forty road, road miles or something along those lines. I'd have to come back to you with the example.
But if it is right at eight forty, to give you, to give everybody an idea how, how much that is, when you drive out of downtown, the mile marker says, I think, eight fifty-two takes you to New Mexico.
Yeah.
So, we're in the middle of El Paso from here, with all the roads that we're taking care of.
We do have quite a few roads and quite a few older roads due to the age of our community. So, there, there's a lot, there's a lot there. And we'll, once we get the full analysis done, we'll come back and give you more in-depth run-through of the EMS report. But we haven't had it that terribly long. And then obviously, we hadn't done anything over the past week with respect to this. So, we will come back for a more full report on that.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Bart, are you seeking direction from counsel today on what we would like to see you do? Or will that come later when we're considering the capital plan for the next fiscal year?
Yeah, I think it'll come later when we're, when we're considering the funding.
Okay.
And in particular, going out for bonds.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Now, when they did the indexing, they also took into account those streets or arteries which are in worse conditions. Is that correct?
Well, they drove all of the, the public roads in Beaumont. So all of the residential roads, the arterial roads, and the collectors.
So who does the prioritizing, who sets the priority as to those which are in most need and compared to?
Engineering staff will look at that, the PCI ratings of those roads. And then we'll go out and we'll assess them. And then we'll come back with a recommendation of which ones we feel are in most need of rehabilitation. And we'll give that to the executive office for approval.
And what are some of the criteria that you will utilize in determining the priority?
In addition of the PCI, we're looking at how many people use that road, what the traffic level on the road is, you know, residences on the road, if it's in a residential area. And so we try to get the most bang for our buck on that. Now, we have also, there are areas of the city, particularly in the older areas, where we don't have any houses on a block, or very few houses on a block. And we've started using that small paver machine that y'all approved a while back. And we plan to do at least one block per month with our streets department and knock those out. Because those are roads that really would never get hit under the street rehab in these older areas. And they're still in need of replacement. So that'll give us, I think, on average, another mile of new roads a year, just with the in-house.
And that does include residential, arterial, and collector street?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Next item is to discuss EMS being operated out of the fire department. Probably a year and a half ago, we had a meeting in this room with the city council, representative of the fire union, fire pension board, and an actuary from Austin came in and made a presentation to all of you. And, and they, the actuary was hired by the pension board out of Austin. And we talked at that time about a plan of moving EMS into the fire department and hiring firefighters in the future to staff ambulances over time. And EMS was in the public health department for many, many years, as you know. And, and I moved the EMS division into the fire department in January of this year, so last month. And the number of authorized positions is set in the code of ordinances. So the number of authorized positions, as it relates to sworn police officers and firefighters, is in the code of ordinances, which requires action by the council to amend those numbers. So currently, there's two hundred and thirty-four authorized positions in the fire department. And we're gonna come to you in the next couple of weeks and ask you to increase the number of authorized positions by nine. And therefore, the, the fire department can move forward with trying to hire nine additional firefighters. And in a perfect world, you'd like to hire firefighters that are also paramedics. That's very difficult to do. So the chief's plan would be to hire firefighters. And you approved on the consent agenda today, some training agreements with various entities. So, we'll hire firefighters, hopefully hire nine as soon as we can, and then get them the proper training where they're eventually, if they're not a paramedic, which in most cases are not going to be, that, you know, start off, they'll be a basic, and then get the training to be an intermediate, and then a paramedic. And I just wanted to tell you that this is the plan moving forward. Again, we'll bring it to you in the next couple of weeks, if not sooner. And I'd like to, to thank the fire chief, Chief White, Chief Singler, Sherry Olmer, Max Nguyen. And this goes back to previous chiefs as well. I mean, we've, we've moved EMS into some of our fire stations, which people had a lot of concerns about, maybe within the organization. But the firefighters and EMS employees have really made it work, and management has supported that. And it's worked really well. So this additional step that we moved forward with in January, I give them the credit. They've, I mean, they've made this thing work, and it's not easy. And so, just wanted to lay out the plan, so you're not surprised in the next couple of weeks when we put this item on the agenda as it relates to the code of ordinances.
Okay. So, I just have a quick question about it. So, the nine that are hired will actually be, they'll be, I know they're able to go back and forth, but they will actually be for EMS, right?
Ma'am?
The additional nine that are hired will specifically be, even though they can go back and forth, and that's part of the plan, they will be hired for EMS?
They'll be assigned to an ambulance.
Yes, okay, that's what I mean, maybe assigned is a better word.
They'll work on that ambulance. And then, over time, through attrition, as the number of civilians that work in EMS decreases, and at some point, will probably go away, could be five years from now, we don't know. We'll staff up with fire-based EMS. That's what you have in Houston, San Antonio. When you're hired, you go to work on, they call it a box, you go to work on an ambulance. So that's what these firefighters will do, and...
And so, moving forward, when they hire new firefighters, they'll go to the box first?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a good plan, I like it. So, and they're on call, is that how that works?
No, they're, they have a schedule. They're gonna work two thousand four hundred and ninety-six hours, just like a firefighter does, same schedule. And they'll have their Kelly days off, just like firefighters do. And, and we talked about this a few months ago. This, it, it's going to be more expensive, but at the same time, we should have much better service. It's a coordinated effort under the fire chief. You have a direct chain of command. And as you know, we have twelve fire stations. Firefighters are most, are likely on the scene first with a medical call, so they're there first anyway.
So that won't change?
That doesn't change.
Okay.
You just have better coordination, better training. You have a medical director that's over all of it, making recommendations to the chief and to Max Nguyen, who's still there, you know, and hopefully will be there for a long time. So, it's, it's gonna be a better operation. And we're gonna, we'll learn as we go. You know, you start off with, again, if you approve it, you're hiring nine, you staff, that staff takes nine firefighters with their schedule to basically staff two people on that truck twenty-four seven, one ambulance. So, if it works out well, which we think it will, we'll come to you again and ask you to increase the number. And as the number of authorized firefighters increased by the council, the number of civilians will be going down on this side. So, it's gonna take a number of years, probably, to fully implement.
Yep. Any questions, counsel? Yes, go ahead, please, councilman, and then Councilman Getz.
City manager, this is, this is a trend across the nation of merging EMS into the fire department, isn't it?
In a lot of larger departments, they've been doing this for many, many years. We, you know, it goes back to, I think, our city council back in the eighties. We had a medical doctor on the council at that time who was instrumental in us providing a very high level of care. We had two paramedics on every truck for many, many, many years, which was the highest level you could have. So, I'd say our quality, and we've won state awards in the last two or three years. So, the quality was excellent already. But to answer your question, the trend has been for many years, probably, for it to be in the fire department. So we're behind, as it relates to that. The quality of care was excellent. And then, the market changed, meaning it's very difficult, this is a tough job. And so, people get burnt out and move on. And then so, it was tough to hire paramedics. And over time, then we started having a myriad of intermediates in the mix, which still provide a high level of care, some basics. So, we weren't able to staff all of our ambulances all the time with two paramedics. And so that's been difficult. And then with COVID, dealing with this pandemic, we've had a lot of vacancies that have been tough to fill. And so, that's another benefit of being in the fire department. You know, we don't have a lot of turnover in the fire department, which is great. Those men and women love their job, and, and they're answering mostly medical calls. Probably eighty percent of their calls are medical calls, anyway. So, this, we think, will be a beneficial change.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Right now, we have some standalone EMS facilities. They're not attached to fire stations. Will this impact that in any way?
We're moving into fire stations as we can. We're getting out of the location on Phelan Boulevard, that blue house. And we're moving into fire station number six, right?
Yes.
So, and we're already in a number of stations already and have been for a number of years. So, we'll move to get in more stations. We may have some satellite locations if we're trying to, let's say, there's a gap in our coverage where we know we have some weaknesses. We, the chief and Max Nguyen, they're working on that, or they've been working on it. So, they're looking at, where's our coverage areas that we could do better with response time? So to answer your question, I think we're gonna have some, probably some satellite locations for a while.
In addition to the one location on Phelan that you mentioned, are there other locations that you're looking at moving out of?
Not at this time.
Okay. And you talked about how we're moving from civilian to putting everybody under the fire department, and that that was going to have some economic impact. Can you speak to that a little bit more? How, how much of an impact are we talking about?
We'll know a lot more as we move forward. I can tell you at this time, it takes nine firefighters to staff an ambulance where it takes seven civilians. And the reason being is because of that Kelly Day, being off every seventh shift. So, right now, in the contract, a firefighter, you know, is hired at, I'll try to find it here. I think it's close to sixty thousand dollars base salary, but then it jumps up quite a bit in the second year.
Sixty-seven, sixty-nine.
Thank you. Yeah, almost sixty thousand. The first year, it jumps up ten thousand dollars in the second year to sixty-nine thousand. And with the, with the number of hours, though, it gets confusing. Number of hours that the EMS staff work, they actually work closer to almost three thousand hours, even before overtime a year. And so, that cost per person is higher for that paramedic, civilian paramedic. At the same time, again, if it takes nine to staff an ambulance compared to seven, the cost, the cost will go up over time, the more firefighters we hire.
Well.
Go ahead.
Of course, numbers are important. And I have long been a proponent of making sure that we have strong fire, strong EMS, and strong police. And I continue to do that. But numbers are also important, and we need to have an idea of, you know, what we're signing on for. When, when will you be able to come to us and give us an idea of what kind of numbers we're talking about?
We could probably do that by the end of the meeting. I can do the math. Again, you could take it ambulance by ambulance, and we could come up with a projected number to say staffing one ambulance will cost X amount more per year. We can do that.
However, I think that you have to put in there, one of the challenges we... However, I think that you have to put in there, one of the challenges we've had, as you mentioned earlier, are getting paramedics to work because there's not that many of them available to hire. And we've been short quite a lot. And I think, you know, when someone leaves after you've trained them, there's a cost to bringing them back. To me, even though it might cost more and it might be, it might not be apples and apples, but you're certainly gonna have a more tenured staff with more experience that will better serve the citizens and you won't have as much turnover. And as we all know, turnover costs money. So I think that won't be in the hard numbers, this versus this, but it should be thought about in the process, I think.
I'll try to get, Ty and I'll look at this during this meeting and come back and we'll give you a projected number because it's not, it's not easy and this is why. The number authorized in the budget by the council is 51 positions in the EMS division. We have 41 or 40 today. It changes every day, people coming and going. And then the number of paramedics, the number of intermediates, the number of basics is changing as well. So if they were all paramedics, it'd be easier to come up with a cost comparison, paramedics versus firefighters. In this case, again, with the changing all the time, if I gave you a number today, it may be very different three months from now because the number of people we have in the EMS division is gonna be different and the, the number of intermediates, basics, and paramedics is going to be different. So we'll give you the best number we can, a ballpark number.
It doesn't have to be today, I mean, just...
But there's a variable that we have to keep in mind, too, because I know how hard we've struggled and I think Max and the chief will attest to the fact that we have had a very hard time keeping, I mean, like right now, we're authorized for 51 and we have 40, you said, or 41. So, I mean, we're 10 short right now.
And firefighters are working overtime to help us staff those, those ambulances.
So that, I think, has to be taken into consideration as well. Because I know that that's been a topic of conversation for probably the last two or three years, how hard it is to find qualified paramedics that wanna stay on the job, because like you said, they get burnout. So if I'm understanding it right, if they start on a box as a firefighter, if they, as they move through, if they don't wanna stay in that position, they can move into firefighting, right?
Eventually, they'll be able to bid.
At some point. So, you know, there is light at the end of the tunnel for them, I guess, maybe, because that's got to be a really tough job to stick with year in and year out.
It is. They're extremely busy and they're going oftentimes call to call to call, especially over the last year, they were before. It's a, it's a tough job. It's a, it's a great job because they're helping people all day and all night.
Right. We get a lot of accolades about them.
Mayor, I would just like to hear from the chief and let him speak on the benefits of having the additional firefighters.
Gave you a good entree, chief, there you are.
Good afternoon. Like City Manager said, it is a tough, tough job. We've been supplementing EMS since he decided to bring them over with overtime firefighters actually riding. We're looking at a tiered system, going with a BLS system and an ALS system for those, the BLS system be responsible for those minor calls, which will in turn free up the paramedics for the more serious calls and they won't be running 20 calls a shift. We're gonna try to get them down to 10, 12 calls a shift, supplementing them with the BLS service being run by the firefighters. In addition to that, campaign letting the public know what an emergency is, so they're not calling and at 2:00 in the morning, morning for that stubbed toe that they wanna go to the hospital for. Very, very tough job. Paramedics are premium. Now, if you authorize the nine additional firefighter position, they will be firefighters slash EMTs. And we have an internal plan to up their medical training to intermediate and paramedic, which in turn will invest in them and they'll wanna stay. As Kyle said, firefighters are long-term. Paramedics, because of the number of calls, and it's such a tough job, the turnover is very, very high. This is a way to stabilize the EMS part of the service to the citizens. To answer Dr. Pearl Shaw's deal, 59% of the paid departments use fire-based EMS. And I'll entertain any other questions that you might have, if that answers your question.
It does. I just wanted you to make a statement.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you tell us a little bit, what is the differences in skill level between BLS, basic life-saving and ALS, advanced life-saving?
Yeah, yes, sir. Actually, EMS has the skill level EMT, EMT intermediate and paramedic. The EMT intermediates and paramedics are able to administer narcotics, inhibition and things to that deal. Whereas your EMT basic is pretty much first aid and things like that. So there are different skill levels.
Okay.
Anything else for Chief White? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, well, if y'all are ready, we'll move on to the next item.
All right, I think the next slew of items is mine.
Are those gonna go together? Oh, okay.
All water-related, pretty much.
Oh, they are, yeah.
All right. So to give you an update, Loeb, as y'all know, was damaged during Harvey. And we shut it down last summer due to chlorination residual issues in the West End where we weren't able to maintain the efficient, or we were starting to not be able to maintain the levels of chlorine in the water. So we took that down and we've been working on not only the FEMA repairs to the site, but also working to make improvements. So to run down the medias, the whole chlorinator system there at Loeb was underwater and damaged during Harvey. So we're replacing all of that and adding booster pumps. We expect to be done with that mid-April of this year. We're also going through and we're going to rehab the steel and concrete ground storage tanks at Loeb. We gonna, we're gonna end up, on the consent agenda today, we rejected all bids because we got to a point we realized more work needed to be added in. So we'll come back and y'all will see that bid again. We need to, to make some repairs on those tanks. Then in order to improve in terms of ability to keep chlorine residuals up in the field, we're, after doing studies with Fries and Nichols, they recommended that we add caustic to the treatment at Loeb. And what that's gonna do is adjust the pH of the water and it should help us to, to maintain chlorine levels going out of there. We expect to have that done in the May timeframe and where we have issues is in the hot weather. So the current plan is that once we get the chlorinators and the booster pumps in, we'll go ahead and bring Loeb back on full-time. And then once the caustics added in, we'll start that treatment program. But in the cooler weather, like right now, we fired up Loeb during this winter storm event. We don't have any issues with the chlorine in, in the cold weather. Some other items that we're working on as we're going through, we're going to rehabilitate the ammonia system out at the site. We're also going to go through all the motor starters that go with those pumps at the site. And then the generator was damaged during Harvey, currently non-functioning. And with FEMA funds, we'll be replacing that generator. It's gonna take a little longer, it's probably gonna be another six to nine months before we get the generator back available at Loeb. And then finally, there's three wells up there. There's well one that's on the master site and then there's a separate site with well two and a separate site with well three. During this winter storm event, we were running wells one and two. We could put about 10 million gallons a day out with that. Well three needs some rehabilitation work and so we're gonna go through and rehab that well to get it back fully functional as well. And there's some other bits and pieces, but that's the, the big pieces to that work. So once we're done, then we should be, you know, bright and shiny again, you know, as opposed to impacted by Harvey.
This is Loeb. Okay, council? Yes.
Okay, so we know when you're gonna discuss in a minute, long-term plans for water systems in Beaumont. But part of those long-term plans call for us, I believe, getting away from Loeb eventually. And so the reason we're putting all of this money into Loeb, as I understand it, is because, one, a lot of it's FEMA money, grant money that we've got from Harvey. And, and two, it's gonna take a long time before we're all the way ready with the new water treatment plant that, that you're gonna discuss in a minute. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. Even in the best case scenario, you're easily looking at seven years or more to need to, to remain on the Loeb system. So we are taking into account, as we're waiting to hear on the grants for the proposed West End Water Treatment Facility. So for instance, with those groundwater tanks at Loeb, we had a short-term, a midterm, and a long-term estimate on doing rehabilitation work on those tanks. And we kind of struck that middle ground. So what we're doing right now is we're doing the work that FEMA's authorized, we're making the repairs necessary, we're looking at that seven-year horizon kind of outlook in terms of our investments, at least until we hear what's going on with the grant for that West End.
And, and that kind of brings me to another logical point. In the event we don't get the grant, we would want to have Loeb fully functional, up, bright and shiny as you use, so that we could continue on using that as we have in, in the past. Is that right?
Yes.
And it could be backup in the future, long time, long-term out.
What's that?
Right? It would, once we get off of that, in seven years or however long it would be, Loeb could be back up if needed. We'll still have it or we, would we sell it?
I would recommend to look to divest the asset after we would get the West End Water Treatment Plant up.
If we were to do that, okay.
Yes, ma'am. The, the reason for that is that we're a mixed groundwater, surface water system today. That's a fairly unusual situation because the treatment methods differ, the water source differs. And so it'll be easier and more consistent water quality if we go to all surface water on there. So I think, once we would get a West End Water Treatment Plant, I would think any remain, any additional investment past the initial plant would be expand the West End Water Treatment Plant beyond the initial 15 MGD and not, the problem that you have with these large pumps and ground storage containers and the rest is if you let them sit not used, then you have problems with them in the long run. And so that would be my recommendation if we get to that.
Okay. And for everyone that's listening, the Loeb is the one going toward Horton County or toward Longmont.
North of Beaumont outside the city.
And it's groundwater where our Lawson is the one over here, close to us.
Yeah. Well, Lawson's the pump station on the river and the Pine Street plant is the one close to us.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did you have something, Councilmember Samuel? I thought I saw you with your hand up.
No, no, that was answered.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, you want to take to the next one, please?
So the next item is the proposed new pump station located near Colliers Ferry. So as you know, during Harvey, Lawson's, which is right on the river flooded. So we've been working with Fries and Nichols to design the new pump station. As of December, we were at 30% design, will be at 60% in March. And then by September, we should be at 100% design and be able to advertise for bids. The current construction estimate for that Colliers Ferry raw water pump station is $21 million. It will be located, as the name implies, right there at Colliers Ferry, out of the flood, what, out of the elevation that was flooded during Harvey. In order to get the raw water to that pump station, we'll be making use of the same pipe under the river from Bun's Canal that goes to Lawson. And then we'll take and we'll have a pipe from the new Colliers Ferry pump station over to where Lawson is today. So that's how we'll get raw water to that pump station.
Council? Councilman Ricketts?
Okay, so if we're gonna be using the same pipe under the river, does that not give us a single point of failure as we have now?
It, it does. It was a monetary consideration and we'll get in, I mean, this is where we bleed into other subjects. So FEMA gave us $47 million to rehabilitate Riverfront Park and that would be to bring it back to the original boundaries. And council decided that we wouldn't do that, we'd instead stabilize the bank where it exists today. And then we'd take the money beyond what was required to stabilize the bank and put it towards this raw water pump station at Colliers Ferry. So in looking at the design of the plant, there's a number of considerations you have to make when you're trying to figure out how to build this thing. So what we looked at was how much that plant needed to pump out of there. Today, Lawson's tends to max out in the low 30s, 30 MGD or 32 MGD. During this recent event, we actually pumped 35 MGD. But in a, in a winter event like we just went through, at one point, we were pumping up to 48 MGD. So what we asked Fries and Nichols to do is look at pumping 45 MGD out of that new plant so that we have sufficient capacity coming in. When you look at that and what it does to the size of the pipes between Lawson's and Colliers Ferry and the size of the pipe down from Colliers Ferry to the Pine Street plant, in order to put another pipe under the river, you're greatly exceeding what the money would have been off that, that FEMA project. So what we decided to do is use the same siphon on the river, which we've had no issues with to this point. And then in a follow-on project, we'll be coming back to assess the condition of the pipeline under the river and then look at, once we see what the condition of that is, if we need to put a second one in for redundancy or if we need to rehab the existing or whatever shakes out there, it would be a follow-on project. So it doesn't eliminate all the points of failure, but it was trying to take into consideration the amount of money we had to work with on there.
Well, and I, I appreciate that, but the prior discussion that I recall, and help me remember if I'm saying something incorrect here, but one of the big points of concern was a single point of failure. And if we're still going to have that, then why are we doing all of this?
Well, we're continually eliminating anything that's a single point of failure in the system and trying to build more redundancy in. So we will address the line under the river, but we felt in this case, it was more important to make sure that the pump station was sufficiently sized for the amount of water we needed to bring into the plant to fit it within. You've also got a number of permitting issues. If we end up putting another line under the river, we're gonna have to go on the other side into areas that are more prone to the EPA, you know, guidelines, wetlands, you know, there's a lot of considerations with the permitting. So we felt that that was going to add a lot to the timeline on that as well. So if we put it, if we put this pump station in and we put a separate line under the river that that pump station's depended on for raw water, and then we end up with permitting issues and construction issues due to the wetlands on the other side of the river, then we end up delaying when we can bring that online. So those are kind of some of the considerations.
So it's a step function, basically. We're looking at it in a step function, basically.
Right.
When you're talking about pumping capacity at our current pumping station at Lawson, you earlier said that we tend to max out at 35 million gallons per day, but during this past winter storm event, we were approaching 45 million gallons per day.
That was with both.
That was with Loeb?
Yes.
Okay.
In combination.
And at one point, I think it even went up higher than that.
Well, and, and two, there's raw water pumping capacity to get from Lawson's into the plant and then there's treated water capacity out from the plant to the city. So we can pump ahead of what we're able to bring in with raw water for a period of time by drawing down our clear well on the site. So max during- So max, during the event, we were pumping between Loeb and the Pine Street plant at a rate of 48 million gallons per day, but we couldn't sustain it for a really long period of time because we're drawing down the clear well in order to do so. Our max raw water during the event from Lawson's was 35. So.
Was that all three pumps being used, or was it just two of the three?
I think it was three of the four.
Three, there's four.
Yeah. But the problem there is shoving the water through that pipeline between Lawson's and the plant is the restriction.
Okay.
Also, also this past weekend, well, this past week, I mean, that's not something that we're going to normally have to deal with.
We hope.
Hopefully. So in the event that we get something even close to that, what would we do different to make the preparation?
We, we did not have any issues with pumping out during this event. So we maxed our capacity out, but we couldn't pump our way out of the event.
It was just too fast.
There was just too much demand. So there's no, I guess that this is, this type of event is probably going to be your worst water demand event. In a summer, you tend to be like lower 30s total demand, 30, you know, 33 maybe, 32. So between people running the pipes and the broken pipes, we just got sucked dry on that. So to give you some idea.
Let's clarify, too, when you do that, please, if you will, Bart. There was a lot of speculation that our water main burst, and we had all these problems. We didn't. It was all because of breaks in the system. This was not a Harvey-type event where we lost our pumps.
The largest line we had break was a 12, I think.
Yeah, which is not a huge.
Right. Today, it wasn't the main line.
Right, which it was said "main line", and then our pumping stations went down and all that. And then none of that happened. This was all due to breaks in the system that we could not pump fast enough as the leaks were fixed, basically.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart.
All right. So the first page and the scale on the left-hand side's a little, it's off by a factor of 10. But basically, we, what this is intended to show you is that we were pumping out of, this is the Pine Street flow. We were pumping the entire time of the event. So you'll see two big dips, one late Sunday or early Sunday morning, right before noon. And then you'll see another one, I think it's Tuesday, roughly about 6:00 PM. So what those are is that when we switch from energy power to generator power, or generator power to energy power, in like a computer room event, you have a UPS to keep you up and running, and you can just flip. You don't have anything that big for a water plant. So you have to shut all your pumps down, switch to the other power source, bring all your pumps back up. So those are your, your very brief dips where you're not pumping out of that plant for a very short period of time because you've got to switch the power. So that was Sunday, we went on generator before the event. The reason we flipped back to energy power on Tuesday is because with using a high-service pump, two variable pumps pumping water out to the city, we didn't have enough power on generator to also backwash the filters, which we needed to do at that point. So energy was looking good. We flipped back to energy. But what you'll see at that 800,000 gallons-per-hour rate, or maybe it is right, 80,000 gallons-per-hour, but where that's at is more normal out of Pine with Loeb up and running, which we had turned on prior to the event. Where you're seeing up at the top on Wednesday and Thursday is pumping as much as we possibly could in the system because we had no pressure due to the fact that we had all those leaks.
It doubled.
So the second page, the total HS flow, that is from Loeb. So we had it turned on on Sunday. On Monday, about 2:30 roughly, we think we had some sort of power surge on one of the phases of power going into the system, which tripped the motor. At the time, we were worried the motor had a problem. So we couldn't get the vendor out to check out the motor, make sure it was okay, and get it back up until Tuesday. So we weren't pumping from Loeb for about 24 hours from there. We were always pumping from Pine the entire time. Once we got the motor checked out, we cranked it back up, and we actually brought both wells up, which is why the amount jumped so much. And that's how we were able to pump 40s, because we were pumping 10 MGD from Loeb and, you know, 30 some odd, 37 from Pine at peak. Now, what the next two graphs show you.
Wait, 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 before you go, there's another dip on the Loeb chart following Tuesday at 3:00 PM. It's, and then it goes down.
We had to fill the tank. We couldn't pump out. And so at certain, remember I was talking about outpacing the clear well? Same thing at Loeb, you can outpace the ground storage tank. So at a certain point, we had to dial it back and fill the tank. So, and you, yeah. So the Northwest Tank and then the Dishman Tank on the final two pages, that'll give you an idea of how fast the demand just brought us down. So if you look in the early morning hours of Tuesday, we started dropping on Monday into Tuesday already. But in the early morning hours of Tuesday, you see Northwest just basically went to zero all at once. Same thing with Dishman, it dropped really, really fast. So we've got, I think, 6.8 million gallons of water in elevated storage tanks throughout all the tanks in the city. And they just dropped to nothing. I did some reporting off of our meters in the system. And best as I can tell, and we'll see it through the billing cycle, is that we pumped roughly a little over double the amount of water through the meters as we did the previous week. So we had, now that could be people running their water, that could be breaks on the residential side. But you can see it on the other side of those meters in those meter readings. So that pretty much explains, in addition to some of the fire-line leaks, some of our water leaks that wouldn't be metered, where all our water went. Because on a normal winter's day, you pump about 20, 22 million gallons a day. And here we are during this event pumping 40-something million gallons a day.
And we can't keep up, and our tanks are empty.
That's where it was. It just, we could not pump our way out of the event. And neither could anybody else in the state of Texas. There's just too much demand.
Go ahead.
You know, when people are frustrated, and when you don't have water, or you have water pouring out of your house, and you don't have electricity and your house is cold, people are going to be frustrated. And it's not unusual for people to lash out and want to blame the city for all of the problems that they are now facing. What I think I'm hearing, and what I think it's important for our citizens to understand, is that there are some things that is very difficult to prepare for. And this is one of those things. And it's also difficult for the city to fairly take the blame for a lot of this when, as I understand it, the majority of the breaks that you were referring to are in homeowners' lines. And we're going to talk about trying to make some accommodations later for the water that was lost. But do you have any sense of how much water is being lost through city lines versus private or commercial lines?
Well, again, I could see a doubling of the amount that went through the meters. And that roughly corresponds to the slightly more than doubling of our pumping. So from what I can tell, the vast majority of the extra water was on the other side of the meters. Now, we did have water line breaks. But we did not have massive water line breaks. Like, I think Port Arthur lost a 24-inch line on Pleasure Island. Our biggest was a 12. So we did have breaks, and we had some water. But I think the vast majority of it was just a lot of smaller breaks in a lot of houses and businesses. And once the weather started warming up and in combination with our pressure levels coming up, you started to see all those spouting. Irrigation systems, fire lines, outside faucets.
And I talked to someone in the Water Department who said that over a period of time, the Water Department, not counting the Fire Department, just, just the Water Department alone, went out and cut off, I think, close to 1,000, maybe more, homes' water where it was gushing. They cut it off at the meter. Do you, do you have a number of how many that was?
Last number I saw was 900 and something. Mike, did you have a total?
Yeah, I did have a total as far as meter kills. And that's just where we shut the meter off. We do have some instances where there were sprinkler systems, irrigation systems, fire lines, but just meter kills alone, we had to make 134.
Okay.
As far as water calls in general, and we're talking about no water, low pressure, meter shut-off, or water leak, we had over 1,360 water calls.
And fire was assisting as well. So fire was going out and helping cut those. Yeah, that was just water utility. So that doesn't include the firefighters helping to cut meters off. And that doesn't include citizens cutting meters off as well, which I'm sure there was a great number of those as well.
Right.
Anybody else?
One more, the mayor. Another source of frustration that I heard loudly from citizens is that they would call 311 as they were told to do and could not get through. It, is that, how can, how can we improve citizens' ability to get, do we need to have more operators in an emergency situation? Do we need to have more lines manned? What, what do we need to do to help facilitate people being able to get through to 311 in this type of a situation?
I don't have the actual sheet printed out. But as I remember it, we get about 9,000 calls a month. And in some very short period, a day and a half or a day or two days, we had over 8,500 calls. So we had a month's worth of calls in a 24-hour period. So you normally have four operators up there taking calls. We plus'd it up to five to six. But we were just simply overwhelmed. You would, you would have to have, you know, I don't know, 10, 20 people.
I don't even think that would have mattered.
We'd have to scale it up. It was just a huge, huge overload of calls. Again, a month's worth of calls in a, in a day or two. Just unable to answer them all. And I would, I would try to emphasize that, yeah, we understand and we, we do take the calls. But we'll take the email, we'll take it off the app. And that would help us scale up in these types of emergencies if we could get them in through there and get them assigned.
And everything that we put out said, if you can't get through, please go online, send an email, or go into the app and request it. And, but, you know, a lot of people want to talk to a person. But in addition, at the very beginning of this incident, we were rescheduling COVID calls, too. And so people were calling 311 for that as well in the first part. And we have a separate call center for that. But all of them were working, even, even the ones that weren't working in the call center.
So it'd be, it'd be very difficult to have it built to that scale to take them all.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, next item, please.
Okay, so the next one, it's the Pine Street Transmission Line. So that project is currently estimated at $13.2 million. We've applied for CDBG funding for an expected $9.8 million. We've not done any design on that line because due to the rules for CDBG funding, anything we do before getting the actual award is on us. They won't cover those expenses. We were told going into the holidays around Christmas that the contract paperwork was, if the paperwork was being sent to their contract people. But we haven't seen it yet. So we're still waiting to get the paperwork to us for the official contract. Once we have that, then we can move forward and start designing that line, which we need to do fairly soon since we're coming to the end of the design on the Colliers Ferry piece. But we intend to go down Pine Street from Colliers Ferry on one part of the roadway, in the road, and bring it to the plant.
Counsel, Councilman Ricketts.
If we're going to use CDBG funding, yeah, I think you said nine point, how much?
9.8 million is what we were expecting.
Okay. Will that take away from our bucket of CDBG funding that we traditionally use for other projects? Or is this additional money?
No, it's totally, totally separate. And if we, if we get approved, we'll be coming back to you because the Water Fund this year has a $53 million operating budget. It's got a good fund balance right now. We're in a good position. Y'all authorized, authorized City of Beaumont to issue $25 million in water revenue bonds a number of months ago, I think back in July. And we received the money sometime this past fall. So, but to answer your question, the pump station, once it's finally approved, the transmission line, that gap in funding, we'll come and talk to you about. Do we utilize some of our fund balance in the Water Fund? Do we use some of the 25 million, which we could? Do we borrow additional monies, and how much? So we're just not at that point yet. We'll, we'll know more. We're just waiting for those approvals, especially as it relates to the transmission line.
What is the fund balance in the Water Fund?
Do you want to have the button?
I got it. The ending for last year was 16 million.
16 million out of 53 million expenditures. So pretty good, pretty healthy right now.
Okay. Anything else, Counsel, on this one?
Here's.
Okay, thank you. Next one, please.
So the next one's the West End Water Treatment Plant. We submitted everything to GLO by the deadline, which I think was October 28th of 2020, as well as the Two River Diversion projects that we're doing in conjunction with DD6. Our current expectation from our grant administrator is that we won't hear anything back from the GLO until March at the earliest, which we're coming up on. The GLO indicated that they're processing the grants related to floods prior to Harvey, I think 2015, 2016 floods that we weren't affected by and weren't eligible for funding under those. But they're processing those grant programs first, and then they'll move on to this Harvey Round 1. So we're still waiting to hear on that.
So are those separate? I mean, like, can you get one and not get the, the two water diversion? I know are in partnership with Greenwich District 6.
They stand on their own. As, as I understand, the outline of the rules of this competition is that you could submit up to six projects, three solos and three in conjunction with another entity. And then they would take and they would stack rank your three solo projects based on how you score according to their criteria. And they'd stack rank your ones done in conjunction with other agencies. And they're only going to consider the top in each category first for everybody that submitted in that program. Once they go through everybody's top, if there's still funding available, then they'll come down to the second ranked. So our top-ranked program on those two river diversions with DD six and the water plant would both be considered on their point totals immediately.
Okay.
And we think our water plant scoring should be really good, so we're, we're hopeful.
I hope all of them are.
So.
Anything else, counsel, on this item? Okay, we'll move to the next one, the Riverfront Park.
Riverfront Park, the plans are close to complete. Let's see where. Lot of paper. So right now, the Corps of Engineers is reviewing our four oh eight, which is their review of the project and how we plan to stabilize the, the banks and the debris in the river. And Lanier is estimating that they hope we'll get an approval from the Corps in the next four to six months. That'll put us bidding the project in August and awarding it in September. If that all occurs, then we'd be looking at the project finishing in the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-two, actually completing all of the work. So the current construction estimate on that, including contingency, is twenty-seven million dollars. Now, there's a couple of factors that are playing into that dollar amount. One, that's assuming that the Corps will allow us to leave the debris in the river, which they initially indicated they would be willing to do so. And in this latest four oh eight review, they're indicating that they may have problems with that. If we have to pull the debris out of the river, obviously, there's going to be additional costs to, to pull that out. The second piece is that we found some metals in the dredge spoil material samples that we did. So we're having to dredge out where we do the bank stabilization. And it's still up in the air as to whether we can deposit those dredging materials where we plan to. If we can't, if they determine that we can't put it there, then we'll have to figure out where we put those and whether there's increased costs on dealing with that dredge material. But those are the only two factors we have. The rest of them we're pretty confident on.
Okay.
Any questions?
Councilman Gitts?
There seems to be some misinformation amongst some of our citizens that we have abandoned plans to do anything with Riverfront Park.
Yes, I read that too.
And.
Corps is not fast.
The Corps is not fast. We, we learned that when we're, we're dealing with Old Dallin Road. But we are moving forward on, I'm losing my voice. We are moving forward on this. And you, you said December twenty-twenty-two is a completion proposed date?
Yeah, quarter, fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-two.
And that would be impacted if we have to dredge more or, or?
If we don't get approval from the Corps in the four to six months that they're estimating, if that drags on further, that'll extend the deadline. If they come back and they tell us you have to remove the material out of the river, we're gonna have to look at the cost of that. And then does that extend our timeline on construction? As well as if we can put those dredged materials where we originally were planning to put them? Or if we have to find some other way to dispose of them? So that can all change our timeline on there. I think we'll have a better idea if we can get through the four oh eight and the Corps gives us the permit, then we have more control once we have that and a little more solid timeline.
And you said the four oh eight by August?
We're hoping. By August.
What, what would the park look like? Because a lot of people may not have been down there. People might not realize how much bank we have lost. What would the park look like once we're finished with this compared to what it was?
We lost in the greatest sections about thirty to forty feet of river line. So where that amphitheater was and all that got, got a bite taken out of it. So it's basically gonna be stabilizing the bank where you see it today, more or less.
Will we come back and put a sidewalk along the water's edge like we had before, something like that?
Sidewalk will be along the water's edge. We'll tie that down the length of the park. And there will still be a dock there as well.
Will we have opportunity for discussions to possibly incorporate some sort of a? I, I'll just say that I've seen a lot of boat traffic on the sandy beach that was created by Harvey across the way. And it's been talked about that it would be desirable to have some sort of slips or something, not dozens of them, but, you know, a few where boats could pull up and dock in anticipation of possibly future development, retail and commercial along the river line. Would it be possible to incorporate that or discussion about that into, into this?
That would be a separate project because now you're building out into the waterway. And so you'd have to have that permitted and, and planned for. The only dock on there will be the way it was before where you can temporarily dock to the park. So if you wanted, if council wanted to come back and do something like that, you're talking additional permitting because you're extending into the waterway and additional monies.
Would it be appropriate to have that discussion now? Not, not today, but now, in advance of doing all of this, looking towards doing something in the future as opposed to coming back later?
I think you can hit it in the second phase. I don't think it's gonna change your bank stabilization any.
Okay. All right.
And be aware, the water's really, really deep there after Harvey. You're talking eighty to ninety feet down. So docks, you know, boat slips out, though.
And sandy beach would be tough.
Well, no, sandy beach would, would be impossible right there.
Well.
It'd kind of be a little steep.
Oh, yeah.
Would a, a floating boat dock or something like that where you're not driving down, you could do that?
Possible. You just have to engineer it for the current.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
Wish there was more land. Okay.
Thank you.
Next one, please.
Next item relates to expenses and transfers related to Tropical Storm Amelda. And then Todd's gonna come forward and, and lead this item. And he can also circle back as it relates to the cost of firefighters compared to intermediates or paramedics. He can give you a ballpark figure.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update on the Tropical Storm Amelda Fund. So currently, the Amelda Fund has spent about four point nine million dollars. And we received about one point three million in insurance reimbursements, which leaves in that cost to the city of three point six million dollars. So we've been going back and forth with FEMA every since two thousand and nineteen when the storm hit. And we've filed several appeals to get a declaration for this storm, and we haven't been successful. So after several attempts of those SASSR declarations to reimburse the city have failed, we decided it's probably time to go ahead and close out this fund. And so since there's no revenues available for the Amelda Fund, we're gonna have to transfer money in from the other funds that incurred these costs. And I have a, a rough breakdown for you because these costs are still going on today. But because I think we're renting some pumps and buying some diesel fuel out at the sewer plant. But I'm being told that operation will probably wind down at the end of this month, so we'll be ready to close this fund out. But general numbers for the General Fund, we're gonna have to transfer in one point six million dollars from the General Fund to the Amelda Fund. We'll have to transfer in one point seven five million dollars from the Water and Sewer Fund and approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Solid Waste Fund. And that will cover the expenses remaining in the Amelda Fund.
What was the one point six from?
That's from the General Fund.
General, okay.
And these are to cover costs such as debris cleanup, emergency protective measures. We had a lot of fleet vehicles that were damaged during the storm and all of our uninsured facility repairs.
Is there any FEMA money?
There's no FEMA money for this. That, that's what we appealed several times. We have a letter from FEMA dated August twenty-first that said the appeal was denied. And then the mayor, the emergency management coordinator and myself, we met with, uh, looks like Congressman Randy Weber, and his office went to bat for us. And they sent us a letter in September of twenty-twenty, again, saying they were denied also, so.
We also met with Corning and, and Cruz.
Right.
And they, they assist, tried to assist us, but it, it didn't go through. We don't understand why. It should have, we think.
Right.
But can't make them. But I think we exhausted every avenue, and I appreciate Captain Ochnychek staying on top of it because he did. It was causing him much anguish. Right?
And if there's no other questions, I can give you a brief estimate on the cost breakdown of transitioning away from EMS into fire. So going under the assumption that you would continue to hire an intermediate in EMS at a annual rate, and this includes salary and benefits of eighty-five thousand versus firefighter starting out first year, salary and benefits eighty-three thousand. And then the second year goes up to ninety-five thousand. And I need to also explain how I'm getting these numbers real quick, but, well, let me give you the numbers real quick. So the first year of this transition would probably cost the city an extra one hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on the difference between those two wages and the fact that you need two more firefighters as opposed to the EMS running it. And then by year five, your differential or your extra cost is about three hundred thousand. So for your first five years, you're looking at approximately one point one million dollars of extra cost to have your firefighters run this operation as opposed to EMS. And one of the reasons why that number continues to grow each year is because in the fire contract, not only do they get an annual increase, but they also get step increases every two years. So like for, not every two years permanently, but for like the first ten years of their contract, they get like a step increase every two years also. So they're getting an annual increase and a step increase as they progress. So their salaries are progressively moving higher, whereas civilians normally usually two to three percent a year. Sometimes, you know, like years like this year, no increase at all. So that's why that cost differential grows as time goes. Like I said, that's a very rough number. Doesn't include anything other than base salary and benefits.
What, what about the pension and our obligations to fund any part of the pension? How, how is that affected?
So that's, that's part of the reason for the price increase is because, well, before we got, before we talked about transitioning or merging this into fire, we were only paying fifteen and a half percent towards fire pension. That's gonna gradually increase to either eighteen or eighteen and a half percent over the, the life of this next contract. So the pension costs are for the city are going up because of the contract and, and they needed the help for their unfunded liability and their, and their fire pension.
So I guess my question, though, is this one point one million over five years that you're talking about, is that on the low side because there's gonna be additional costs for us to fund?
I think that's on the low side because you're probably gonna have difference in, like firefighters, as they also progress, they get different levels of certification pays depending on, you know, their education and their experience. If they're on a dive team, they have different things that they can incentivize them for and adds to extra pay on their paycheck. Also, they have a higher rate of pay, so anytime they have overtime, they're gonna have a lot more pay associated with that versus civilian overtime.
And as our pension costs increase too, that's, that's gonna impact that as well, right? Okay, we, we just need to have numbers to plan on, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, we'll move to the financial status report, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good. Just gonna let you read this. I'll walk you through some of it for those in the audience maybe watching this. Understand where we are financially. We have a two hundred and ninety million dollar operation this fiscal year. The General Fund has a one hundred and thirty-two million dollar budget. The General Fund captures the general activities of the City of Beaumont. For example, police, fire, EMS, parks, libraries, streets and drainage, and so forth. So that's the main fund, I'd say, of the City of Beaumont, it's one hundred and thirty-two million. And then you also have a separate Water Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund, and others that make up that two hundred and ninety million. So the General Fund started out this fiscal year, October the first, with a projected three point seven million dollar deficit. And then, as you know, that budget is submitted to the council by August the fifteenth, according to the city charter requirement. So after that August the fifteenth, we were able to bring you a proposed contract with the Fire Union, which you approved, and that added an estimated seven hundred thousand dollars to the budget. We talked about fire-based EMS will cost more than civilian-run EMS. As we continue or when we start the process of hiring additional firefighters, EMS salary increases will add an estimated three hundred thousand full staffing. We don't have full staffing, so I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna realize that three hundred thousand dollars. There will be additional cost because we did increase their hourly rate to twenty-two dollars to help with the number of vacancies and turnover. There won't be three hundred thousand dollars. I'm just showing that number if we did have full staffing. Sales tax receipts from October of last year, which again was the start of this fiscal year through February. So again, that's for five months. We're down fifty-five thousand dollars less than the budget projections. That's, I mean, that's as close as you can call it out of a forty-one point three million sales tax. Forty-one point three million is the estimated sales tax receipt. So that's less than probably two tenths of one percent from what we budgeted. So we wish it were higher. We've had some good months. I think we had two really good months out of the, out of these five months. We've also had some, I mean, it's been up and down. And you, you all get those sales tax monthly statements. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which I'm just talking about next year, Corona relief funds for bus service may or may not be there. Two and a half million is a good estimate for what the city transfers most years to the Municipal Transit Fund. We, the city, because of that federal money, CARES Act money, did not have to make that two and a half million dollar transfer this year. If we did, that, you know, that deficit, instead of starting off at three point seven, would be two and a half million more. So thank goodness we. So thank goodness we received that money. We think we'll receive it again, but we don't know. I mean, they're considering, as you know, that 1.9 trillion, maybe two trillion federal, federal money again. So we'll, we'll see what happens. We talked about Lucite closing their industrial facility off of 347, Highway 347. They're still employing a lot of people out there today, but they are moving to shut that facility down. And if they do before the end of the year, you know, they're not going to make that $500,000 payment next year. The general fund, as Mr. Semino mentioned to you, will need to transfer approximately 1.6 million to the Amelda fund to cover expenses tied to the tropical storm. Then you can see the general fund, this is very important. The general fund will need to transfer funds from the fund balance to the street rehabilitation fund later this fiscal year to continue street rehabilitation. Or will need to issue certificates of obligation, which will require a tax increase to service the new debt. So when a new council is seated, probably, well, in May and if we probably have one or two runoffs in June, a new council, a critical thing they're going to have to consider is how much do you want to borrow next time for street rehabilitation? There will be a tax increase tied to that. Because we stand here today, I don't see any other way to do it. You could utilize, you can't get to eight million, you can't even get to probably a quarter of it. You could borrow, not borrow, you could use some of your fund balance to keep things going for a while. You may, you know, council consider that at a later date. Do you want to utilize one million, two million of your fund balance for street rehab? But at some point, you're going to have to borrow additional money. And that'll be a critical consideration. Do you borrow, for example, 16 million dollars hopefully for two years to meet that eight million dollar threshold that Bart talked about? Do you borrow a little more? Do you borrow 20 million? And the rule of thumb for that is if you borrow 20 million to repay that 20 million over, say, 20 years, it changes every year, but the, the rule of thumb is you'd have to increase your tax rate probably two cents just for that 20 million for street rehabilitation. That's before you consider anything else. Any other street projects, any other drainage projects, any other general improvements? So y'all have been through this exercise many times, so I'm speaking more to the public. But that's the process that we use every two to three years. Every two to three years, usually you consider borrowing for street projects, drainage projects, general improvements over here. It's tied to the tax rate. And then you consider borrowing, issuing water revenue bonds, which is tied to customers' rates, water and sewer rates, which is on their water bill. Two separate things financed two separate ways. So. The good news is we always have vacancies and we budget for full employment. So that will definitely help. It helps every year and it will definitely help this year. And as mentioned earlier, we should receive additional Corona relief funds. We've already received, I think, 1.3 million. And we're waiting for an additional 5.2, 5.3, somewhere in there, which we can reimburse the general fund for eligible expenses tied to the pandemic. So I think at the end of the year, depending on again what happens with sales tax, which we're monitoring every month, you know, five months into this fiscal year, especially if we continue, if we get the remainder of those federal funds, we're going to be, we're going to be fine. Two things that saved us this year. Number one, our fund balance and number two, the federal funds. So without those two factors, we'd have some serious challenges. Thank goodness we don't again because of those two, two reasons. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Counsel, anything on the finances? Okay. Okay.
So we're talking about how much it's going to cost us to maintain our rate of improvement of streets. And it's a substantial amount. I'm constantly hearing talk about adding more sidewalks into the city of Beaumont. These street improvements and the money associated with that, that's not sidewalks, that's streets, right? That's streets. So while I think we can all agree we would love to have more sidewalks, funding becomes the issue on that. And where does that money come from? So do you have any thoughts as to if there's a continuing outcry from citizens saying we want more sidewalks? How would we finance that? Where would that money come from? Would that be still an additional amount that we would have to look at for a tax rate hike? How, how would that be funded?
So every two or three years, we go, you all normally have an off-site work session. You talk about potential projects. Let's talk about street projects. Could be sidewalks, could be park improvements, could be drainage improvements. And I'll give you two examples. So back in, I think, 2013, the council said, we want to borrow 42 million dollars. And we laid out for you and spelled it all out, project by project listed out. The estimated cost of that project, there's a small built-in contingency. The council voted seven to zero and said, all right, we're going to allow the city of Beaumont, y'all voted on it and proved it. So we went out and borrowed 42 million dollars. We've completed every one of those projects except Riverfront Park. The reason we haven't completed that is because of the damage from the storm. We were pretty close to going out for bids.
When the storm.
From riverfront park before Harvey. So that's the way it works. And then three or four years ago, I believe, we did the same thing. And we talked about, y'all did potential projects to fund and the council agreed 7-0. Said, we're going to borrow 10 million dollars for street rehabilitation only. And that's what we did. And the tax rate increased from 69 cents back up. It used to be 64 cents, probably 10 plus years ago. 64 cents for a long time. When the council borrowed that 42 million, it increased to 69 cents to service that debt, to repay the debt. So when you borrow the 10 million, again, it's a little more than one cent at that time because you have to know how much debt's falling off, how much is coming online, what are interest rates doing? Are you borrowing for 20 years, 30 years? Took two cents at that time. You borrowed 10 million just for street rehab. So we went from 69 cent tax rate to 71. So this new council is going to have to go through this same exercise and determine how much do you want to borrow and for what projects? So that's a consideration the council will make. And I've seen everything from sidewalks discussed to various park improvements again, to again drainage projects, street projects. So it's all going to be how much do you want to borrow and for what? Again, that is, and you didn't bring, I'm just saying this for the folks listening, totally separate from water and sewer projects. Water and sewer projects are funded by the bills that our customers pay for water and sewer consumption. So that's a different discussion, same exercise. How much do you want to borrow? How much are rates going to increase? What projects are you identified, which are all in the capital program? So to answer your question, if the council sometime after probably July, if we start talking about this, the council makes that determination.
And so I, I want to make it real clear based on what you just said, that what citizens, let me back up and say, it's a matter of pretty common knowledge that a lot of people in the city of Beaumont have signed a petition to want a dog park. And I was questioned and some people said, well, we have brown water or we have sewagees backing up. You know, and you're talking about a dog park. Completely separate funding sources. It's, you know, to improve your sewer and water issues, that's out of the enterprise fund, water funds. Doesn't have anything to do with the general fund and the amount we're borrowing for capital improvement projects. Is that right?
Doesn't have anything to do with brown water or water and sewer projects.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, city manager, I don't believe you addressed this issue. You may not be able to. But do we know why Lucite is closing that facility and how many jobs would that impact?
It's all market driven. You know, Lucite bought that facility from Dupont a number of years ago. It's in the old Dupont grounds. I think there's somewhere, let me check, you know, how many. I think it's somewhere probably between 60 and 100 employees.
I think that's right. And, and I think part of it is going to stay open a little longer. And then there's other facilities on that site, OCI and some of those that might absorb that. We'll see.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes, Mr. Manager, I think you mentioned when there are projects that we want to do, say for street, street and drainage. That most times if we attempt to get money, we issue bonds to go out bond issues. And when we get the bond issues, if we get, say, 20 million dollars in, in bond, that, that has an impact on rates. Or how, where does that money, how is that repaid?
Well, the tax rate is divided up every year. The tax office tells us out of that 71 cents, what portion is going to operations, to the general fund? What portion's going over here to debt service? So it's again divided every year. And depending on how much you borrow and how long you finance it for, they'll tell you, we know upfront when we borrow, how much it's going to take to service that debt. It's the same thing as if you bought, for the public listening, if you bought a house and financed it over 30 years, you know, now at two and a half percent interest, or if you bought a car and financed it for five years, you know, what's your, what's your monthly note going to be? Well, we have, we pay twice a year a note to service that debt depending on how much we borrow. And we'll, we'll always have that. We have it on, we have it, you know, the solid waste has borrowed, solid waste funds borrowed money, water fund, again for streets, in general fund for streets, drainage and other improvements. So it's listed out in a report that we give y'all. You've seen it every year on an annual basis. What are our debt service requirements? And we do a good job of meeting those requirements. Our finance office is on top of it. That's why we get the, that's why we have the ratings we have and that's why we, we also get the annual awards pretty much every year from various groups because we try to do it right and I think we're great custodians of the public's money.
But that does equate to an increase in taxes when possibly?
Yeah, there's, there's been times in the last 10, 15 years where we had a lot of debt falling off and it allowed us to borrow money without increasing the tax rate. Those days are over. Our debt now is pretty much level until we borrow next time. It's pretty level now for the next probably 15, 20 years. And so any new debt that the council wants to issue is going to require a tax increase.
Okay, so that's, that's the bottom line to it at this point. So when we talk about other projects, funding other projects that requires going out for additional revenues, that also means increase in payment of debt also.
No doubt. So if you start off and let's just take from the premise that, I'm just using this as an example. If the council said, look, we like the eight million a year. Try to spend eight million a year, eight million a year on street rehabilitation. So let's just say 16 million. And then you want to do another 10 million dollars worth of projects. And round it off, let's just say, hey, we want to borrow 25 million dollars. Probably going to have to increase the tax rate two and a half cents to service that debt.
So even if it's not coming from the same funds, if we increase our debt in either one of the funds, it's going to come back to how we repay that debt either way. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So to say that one does not affect the other, in the end, it affects the taxpayer always.
Definitely affects, affects the taxpayer. And it also, and this gets technical that you understand this, but people don't do this every day. The water fund and the solid waste fund, as allowed by the charter, makes a transfer to the general fund on an annual basis. So depending on how those funds are doing, definitely has an impact on that in lieu of transfer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on the financial? Okay, he'll take us to the next one, please, which is also kind of financial.
Mayor, counsel, thank you for your time today. I know this is, these are, you know, anyone that says the city of Beaumont's not doing a lot of work and a lot of good work besides the street projects like Washington Boulevard that are under construction. Today is an example of so many items that are in the pipeline. Big ticket items from the pump station, transmission line to a, to a $100 million proposed new water plant in the West End. Why do we need that? Well, if you had water, a water source out of the LMBA canal, right there on close to Major Drive, as well as our Pine Street facility pumping water on the east end and the west end of the city, that helps everyone, especially if you look down the line 30, 50 years. But there's really a lot of great projects on this list that staff has done an excellent job of working on for, for a couple of years. And so the last item today is to talk about water billing for leak adjustments. I know a lot of citizens are interested in this and Todd Semino, our CFO, will come forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
So mayor and council, we're proposing a new leak adjustment form and policy specific for the winter event that just occurred. So what you have before you is what you'll see in the black and the red. That's the wording of our original leak adjustment form and policy. And what we're changing it to specifically for this storm and only this storm is will be in the black and the blue. But allow me to compare and contrast the difference between the two with just giving you an example. And I think it would clear it up for you. So under the normal leak adjustment form and policy, this is what would happen. You get a water bill this month and say it's about 60 to 70 dollars, which is the average residential water bill per month. Now, now you have the leak from the winter storm. So now say your bill is 200 dollars. Okay, so under the original leak adjustment form and policy, you would be required to pay that 200 dollars and then file this leak adjustment form, submit your receipts. If a plumber was involved, have their license down there for a commercial business. We would go through an evaluation process to make sure that the receipts are appropriate. We would check our, our system software because we're able to look at water meters online to make sure the water usage did in fact decrease. And then the following month, we. And then the following month, we will usually, hopefully by the following month, we would give them that credit for the two hundred dollars they paid. Not in full, but what we would do is we would go back and look at their average usage for the prior twelve months. And that's what we would charge them for the month that they had the leak. And so we would give them a credit. And so if they, if they paid more than what the credit was for, then that credit would just carry over onto their next bill. Now, what we're proposing for, which is very different for this winter storm event, say they get their bill sixty-six dollars, seventy dollars. They get the winter storm bill, two hundred dollars. We're not going to make them pay the two hundred dollars. We're going to have them pay what they paid us last month, which was the, say, the sixty-six or seventy dollars. They're still going to submit this form. They're going to turn in all the required paperwork that we're, that we're requesting. And then when we figure out what their adjustment is, then the next bill would be, would be corrected. But they won't be out of pocket for the money that was caused by the leak. And also, this leak adjustment will not count towards the one of the two that you're allowed in any twelve months. It wouldn't penalize you for that.
That was going to be my next question, because I know you can only have one.
Two in twelve months.
Two in twelve months, but.
But this one won't count towards that.
Yeah, that'll be waived for this.
Right.
Any other questions on this?
Todd?
Yes.
If I may, Mayor, is this something that they can access online?
There will be.
What we're going to do is we're going to get rid of the red and the blue and the black. We're going to, we're going to do it in its final form. And we're actually going to mail these out with everyone's water bill. All forty-four thousand customers will, will get this notice.
So that's good. It'll be automatically in their bill.
Right.
They won't have to call to request it.
Correct.
And they just fill it out, turn, will they have to have copies of their repair bills?
They will.
Okay. And that will be stated on the form?
It, yes, ma'am, it's, it's already stated in here. And it also, like I, like I said, if it's a commercial business, they have to have a licensed plumber do the work. And so we're asking for the licensed plumber license ID also.
Residential also?
Residential, they don't need a licensed plumber.
Will it state that?
Ma'am?
Is it?
It's stated, it's stated in here. It's in that first paragraph.
I'm just trying to eliminate phone calls because.
Hopefully, yeah, we went back and forth three, three or four times trying to include everything for every possible question we could think of.
Great job, thank you.
Yeah, that was my question about residential as well. You don't have to have a licensed plumber. Licensed plumbers are going to be a scarce commodity for, for a while. So you could have a handyman or somebody, you know, put a shark or whatever on your pipe and, at your house. And you don't have to have a licensed plumber for that.
Correct.
What, what do you have to submit in the form of documentation of those repairs?
So if they hired a handyman and paid them money, we would like a receipt of that. If they bought any pipes or other supplies, we would need a receipt of that, just to document that, yes, they did in fact have a leak, they repaired it. And so when we get audited by our auditors, we have substantiation for writing that excess balance off.
Okay.
Is there some instances in a resident, like if they had major problems under their house, that they would have to have an elec, a licensed plumber or no?
Uh, that'd probably be a Chris Boone question.
I mean, I'm just making sure, because if it's, I mean, I, I know a few people that had a bunch of pipes bust under the, the older houses that are lifted. Do they have to have licensed plumbers to do that if it's major work? I guess if they have to pull a permit, they do, right? Yeah, okay. But just a leak, can sometimes be fixed even by the homeowner? Yes, since I have one, any homeowner can come to my house and fix mine. Okay, anything else for Todd? Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that, I believe, concludes our work sessions. So now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today, now's the time to do so. If you are going to speak and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the officer. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Before we move on to that, though, please, I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of the government code. Susan K. Tony versus the City of Beaumont, cause number A dash two-zero-four, comma, six-four-four. So now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you're going to speak, please go ahead and fill out that green slip.
Steve Hoffman, seventy-four-five, Barmy, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I, I watched the dog park issue build over time. On Nextdoor, it started on a neighborhood, a neighbor talking on the Nextdoor, asking that they needed a dog park because they lived in an apartment complex and they had, someplace needed a lot to dog run and stuff like that. My daughter's in Houston, and they have these mega complexes, very much like what we're building right now throughout the west end of Beaumont and other parts of the city. And they're putting in dog parks. And I'm not sure if the city has encouraged that, but I think to take the pressure off of the city to build dog parks, maybe they should be encouraged to, with these apartment complexes, to install dog parks. I think it would be a real good thing. It'd be a, a win-win for everybody. I'm not sure how to do that. But I mean, I'm not sure you could put ordinance in place. But there'll be some way you can encourage the builders to do that, if nothing else, build public opinion. As, as far as the, the water system, yeah, I hear a lot of people always complaining, because you know everybody's unhappy. With the COVID thing, you know, it's like they're, 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 she's a letter for bear. Looking for anything wrong, everything's always to be the city. And the city's got a big, huge pile of money, and they can go spend it. And, you know, I think today was a very sobering meeting in that regard. So I mean, that, that's not a free ride everywhere. But back to the dog parks. In the prior meetings, y'all talked about not really wanting to get into having donations made from people to, to build the parks. Is that not maybe a better solution, given that the fiscal condition may be a little tight? And certainly, big industries, the ones that, surviving COVID and, and the oil industry changes, could throw money. Didn't the skate park receive some money outside to help build that skate park? That's my recollection, I'm not sure if it's true or not. But that same thing could help, once you identify locations of where you should put the skate parks. That's the missing piece, and y'all talked about it. I haven't heard anything more, but I think if you can say, we need three, we need three skate parks, and here are the areas of the city that need to have the skate parks to make sure all, all communities are being served. And so we don't have political issues that, you're making an issue that you don't want to have to deal with, which I can understand that. But I mean, you know, to me, let's, let's look for win-wins here. And, you know, external money, I mean, it's out there. And, you know, I mean, you don't spend city money. And I, and it solves the problem. And let's face it, I, I follow a lot of things. I, I subscribe to a lot of newspapers. I subscribe to some restaurant industry newspapers. I subscribe to the, uh, public, uh, human resource. And one thing we're hearing constantly is pets are a big thing now in COVID. And not just pets, particularly dogs. And so, you know, I think that's an issue that you need to address. It, it's going to become a, a hot button. And coming up to elections, that's a good thing to be, to avoid. But I mean, just something for the good of the city. Because people are going to come back, you've heard about the petition. It's not hard to have people sign a petition for dog stuff. I've got a face mask, that's kind of, that's come from Petco. People will talk to you when you have that Petco face mask on. That's just a sign of the way things are nowadays. We've had a, a shift in, in society, and that's towards pets right now. So I, I think, you know, but it's a good way to, to have, have the council, you know, do something that gets people to say, well, look what they did this for us. And right now, they're saying, no, they didn't do shit, didn't do stuff for us. I've watched it, I've watched it happen, so I understand totally. So I mean, it's, you know, and, and I, I grew up here, I understand how it works.
Come on, Mr. Hoffman. Um, I believe that our, that our.
He's still got a few seconds.
Oh, he does? Okay, I can't see him.
I'm sorry, his time is up, I'm sorry. He just turned, he just did it.
Are you, are we doing it a different way? You're fired.
I just wanted it on my phone.
All right. I was too, I'm going, what? Okay. Thanks, thanks, Tina, and you're on it now, right?
I, I'm on it, and I was giving Mr. Hoffman time for all the meetings he's missed because of.
That's all I have, Mayor. Okay, there's no other citizen who wishes to speak today? Just making sure. Okay, there appears to be none, so we'll move to council member comments. I'll start with you, Councilmember Gutz.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, what a week, and what a difference a week makes, right? Look how nice the weather is outside today, and where were we a week ago? Wow, we were hurting. Many of our fellow citizens were really hurting. And those that were homeless or that didn't have shelter and no heat, no water, really, really struggled. I want to thank some of the nonprofits and churches that stepped up to shelter our most vulnerable citizens, the Victory Temple over on South Eleventh Street, Cavalry Tabernacle, Islamic Society Southeast Texas, and of course, the Salvation Army. Also want to extend my appreciation to the Cajun Navy for coming in and those that helped fund their efforts and, you know, pay for the supplies that were handed out for the last couple of days over at St. Mark's Episcopal Church. And I know there are many, many others that were involved in efforts to pass out water, supplies. And I, I don't have a comprehensive list of all of them, so I won't even try to start naming them all. But that was a, a sign of where our city can come together. And we have always come together during crisis situations and prayerfully, and hopefully, we will continue to do so. With the nice weather today, we are looking at our now brown and damaged plants. And we're looking at, you know, wow, are we going to have to look at this for a long time? There is some relief that I want to tell our citizens about. There's going to be a free tree giveaway this Saturday, February the twenty-seventh, at eight-thirty AM at the Beaumont Botanical Gardens, which is located at sixty-eighty-eight Babe Zaharias Drive. And they want you to wear face masks and, you know, social distancing is in effect. But they are partnering with the Texas for Houston and the Beaumont Botanical Gardens to make this giveaway possible. The grower says that unfortunately, the wax myrtles were damaged in the freeze, but they will be giving away eastern redbud trees, five hundred three-gallon trees to be given away, live oaks, southern magnolia, eastern redbud trees as well, vitex and Carportone LaCuit. So that's this Saturday to go pick out a tree. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Schell.
Thank you, Mayor. This winter event has been a challenge for many people. And for those that have suffered loss and discomfort, as everyone in this council feels, we are truly sorry. I do appreciate the nonprofits, as Councilman Gutz mentioned, that worked to help our community to get through this. And I appreciate the mayor, Tim with ELC, all their staff there, all the staff of the city, first responders, everyone that worked really hard to try to, you know, diminish the impact that this event had on our community. It's hard to deal with these kind of events. It's like a Harvey flood. There's only so much that our system can handle. But yet, when it came, our, our citizens and our city hall and employees, ELC, they stepped up and we were able to get through it together. So I do appreciate all of our staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we can, we all appreciate the thousands of volunteers that you didn't see, that we never see, that step up when something like this happens. That's one of the great things about our community, is we have so many great people that live here. And you don't have to ask them to do something, they just do it. And it's, you know, I know a lot of times, people, if they don't see it on Facebook, it's like it didn't happen. But I know for a fact that literally thousands of people were out helping out, that you don't see. I know the mayor put in a whole lot of time. And you don't, and she isn't going to call everybody and say, hey, here's what I did today. But when you get a chance, if you ever get the opportunity to get an idea of what the emergency operation center does, we do want to pass along to Tim and Bart and Chris and literally all the ones that made it all work. I know that Bart got a lot of phone calls, and Molly got a lot of phone calls, and Kyle got a lot of phone calls, and Chris, and of course, Todd's got to keep an eye on the water. So I know he's getting phone calls. But, I mean, we know we're going to get them up here. But these are people that go above and beyond, that you don't, that aren't going to stand up and tell you, hey, here's what I did last week. But we've got some great people that put in a whole lot of time. And all things considered, we got, we're looking at seventy-five degree weather today, you know? And I was glad that we lifted the ball notice when we did. It didn't really help me, my water didn't get back on until about eleven-thirty this morning. But it certainly relieved a whole lot of other people. And I know there are other people that'll still be working on those leaks and those plumbers that we know. I didn't, probably didn't see Jeremy today for obvious reasons with the local plumbers union, because those guys are jumping through their hats. You know, we've, we're so fortunate to live in a community. And I try to, you know, I, I tell everybody just how fortunate we are and the great people that we've had here. And sadly, over the last couple of weeks, we've lost some really spectacular people. Rogers Ellis, who was the fourth McDonald's in Texas in nineteen-sixty-nine. And Rogers, actually, at one point in time, had eighty-one McDonald's franchises from here to Corpus Christi. And he helped so many other people get started, because the only way you can get a McDonald's franchise is to work at McDonald's. You can't buy it. And having known Rogers extremely well since he first got here, I, I recall that when he opened the McDonald's, and this is really a cool story, the guy was an outstanding sales representative for NCR. And he kept his NCR job for six months, just to see how this McDonald's thing was going to work out. Now, it's real easy in twenty-twenty-one to say, well, obviously, McDonald's worked out. But when you're investing your own money and you're the fourth one in Texas, you don't know that it's going to work out that way. But just Rogers Ellis, one of the finest guys that you'd ever meet. And he was just one of some that we recently lost. Floyd Landry, and same, an outstanding person, an outstanding attorney, just an all-around great guy. The Moore Landry Law Firm that's been with us, he and Ray Moore started that a long time ago. Just a really class act. For those of us that knew Roy Huckabee, also an extremely fine gentleman and a great community leader. There's, for those of you that may remember Terry Bell, he was a chef around here for decades. He passed away as well. And, and for those people that stayed on their toes, Marcia Woody Zumo was very good at getting all her students to do exactly that. And, and she recently passed away. We have so many great people in Beaumont that have made our community better. And as you go throughout this week, thank the ones that are still with us. Because. Because the people that are here is what make Beaumont what it is. It's not our buildings, it's the people. And we just have a great community. And last week, we got a chance to just see how good so many of them are. Because as, when you get down to nine or 10 degrees and it hadn't been that cold in 100 or 150 years, you just realize how giving this community is. And you didn't have to call them and ask them to do it. They just jumped up and did it. And so with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over, back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank City Manager for the consideration that's been given to those who had problems with their water as a result of the storm. As I sat watching water flowing from my office, I was thinking about the dollars that were flowing down the street. And in calling 311, which I did, and having to wait for over four hours because of the backup, I thought about what that meant, not just to me, but what that meant to all of the other citizens who was watching water flowing from their house. So thank you for giving that consideration. And thank you, Councilmember Pay. You know, over the years since I've been here, I try not to single out individuals that transitioned to other state of existence. Because I was taught that every soul is a special soul and every life that leaves is important to someone. And I also agree not only that, but I agree that we must value individuals while they, while they live. That takes me to the belief that we should do unto others as we would have them do unto us. On yesterday, last evening, about 6:30 p.m., I received a phone call that disturbed me. It was a phone call from a city employee that asked me, what could I do to stop an employee from doing something that I felt was wrong? I expressed to them, I am an, I'm a legislator. I'm on the legislative body. That's not a task for this council. Administration is to be done by administrators. They asked me, well, what happens if you step outside of those boundaries? I said, I try to avoid stepping out of those boundaries. Because if I saw a problem with a city employee, I would let the city manager know. They asked me, what relief would I have if I felt bullied on my job by a council member? I informed them that you should report it. You should report it to HR or to your supervisor. And they did. Every individual, no matter where they work, whether it be at McDonald's or in the White House, they deserve a certain amount of respect. And when a person disrespects them, there should be some remedy. I asked that the city manager, there will be a complaint filed. It should be an HR, a city employee encountered a council member that bullied her. And I believe that's something that's very inappropriate. And I asked that we investigate the complaint. And I think that should be reported back to council, the results of that complaint. It should have come in today. And I asked that you please respond to the employee, protect that employee, and respond to this council with the investigation.
Okay, that's it, sir?
That's it.
All right. Councilmember Mouton.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, after our ice and cold-filled week that was out of anyone's control, an act of nature, we do realize that it's very, very frustrating for citizens when you cannot get through to 311. However, when there is a disaster, there will be an overload of calls. And it's not that anyone is trying to avoid from answering them. It's just the situation at hand. I'm sure there's always ways that you can improve. But when it happens so fast and it doesn't happen on a regular basis, you're just forced to get in gear and do whatever you need to do. So to the 311, our fire department, our water department. Mike, I believe I talked to you more last week than I have in six years. I really did. But thank you so very much. And to the entire city staff, everyone went above and beyond to meet the needs of our citizens. And that's what we do because we are in the customer service business. Our customers are our citizens. And so everything is not gonna go perfect. But we can do the best that we can do, and then you learn from it. This has not happened since 1906, the temperatures that, that we encountered. So if it hadn't happened in over 100 years, there, there's just not a rulebook for it. It's just not a playbook for it. So in spite of, we came through it together as, as a city, as a team. Also, our EMS, everyone just pulled together to, to make it happen. Also, two of the the areas, Victory Temple and the Islamic of Southeast Texas, were in my ward. I was able to visit those two facilities in my ward, but also visiting St. Mark's and Salvation Army. Want to thank those, all of those groups for pitching in. But when everyone worked together, that's what happened. It works. And it will always work when everyone wants to see everything succeed. And I think the homeless were serviced. People were, were warm. They were safe. And I don't think it was any reports of, of any deaths. What, what's there?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. But it, it was, it was cold out there. I mean, it was, it was cold inside your house, let alone outside the house. It was, it was just unreal temperatures for us, huge adjustment. Also, in Terrill Park, Beaumont Botanical Gardens, please don't forget to go out. They're giving away free trees, free shrubs, as Councilmember Gatz said. Everything was frozen. Everything is dead, so we're gonna have to pull up, clean out, and replant. So they're giving away for free, so please go out, pick those up, and let's replenish our shrubberies and greenery around the city. And I want to give condolences to the Bosett family for the loss of their family member. And also, it's been so much that has gone on this month. I know that I have not said anything about Black History Month and the contributions that have been made to this country in Black History Month, the month of February. When we come back to council, it will be March. Or do we have another Tuesday? I think we will be in March when, when we have a next.
I don't even know what today is.
Our next meeting. I know, it's been so crazy, but Black History Month is celebration in February. It's been a most unusual February for us, but I could not go without saying anything about Black History Month. And so, Mayor, with that, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for the city manager, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Mr. Manager, what is the city policy about having campaign materials on city property, whether it be election signs or handouts or anything promoting an election outside of the actual timeline where you can have your signs at a polling place? Is there any policy that the city has on that?
There is a city policy. City employees should not be active or involved in any political campaigns. So what happens is oftentimes, a candidate will, you know, go in or friend, you know, go in and put something down on a desk or put something up in a library or in one of our buildings. And when we see it, you know, we, we do have 1,250 employees on the payroll and a lot of part-time employees, but eventually, if the right person sees it, we, we take that and try to get it back to that candidate. I think what he may be referring to, and I'm not gonna get into the facts, we did have a council member and an at-large candidate go to the Sterling Pruitt Center yesterday afternoon around 5:00. And complaints have been made. I don't know if the actual employee has made a complaint yet, but I know some people have already contacted HR. We'll, we'll investigate the matter and provide that information to the council. We have video of the, not audio of the exchange, but video of the event. And HR is fully aware of it. I'm aware of it. You know, it's one of those deals where I work for the seven of you. All the other employees report basically up to me or the city attorney or the city clerk or the chief magistrate, so it's a different issue, meaning it's, it's, all we can do is give you the facts as we know it when they come out. And it's up to you to do whatever you choose to. So it'll be handled, though, in the same respect as it would for, you know, as if a complaint was filed against another employee.
Thank you. And, you know, I want to address that because, yes, I did go to the Sterling Pruitt Center. Someone asked to see it. They hadn't been there before. I took them. When I got there, I did see some campaign material on the desk at the receptionist's station. And I did mention to that receptionist that that is against city policy, but I did not direct that receptionist to do anything because she's not my employee. Okay? She's the employee of Mr. Hayes. So please investigate that and let us see what your findings are. And the point I want to make is that it is not city policy to allow campaign materials to be out there on city facilities. I don't see that I did anything wrong in pointing that policy out to an employee as long as I didn't instruct her on what to do, how to do, when to do, anything else. She took it upon herself to remove those because she probably knew that that shouldn't be out there. They were removed. They may be back today. I don't know. But I did do that, and I don't see that anything wrong about that. And I'll say right now that I hope no other employees go out there and, I mean, no other candidates go out there and start putting handbills out there because that's inappropriate and against city policy.
Okay, so once we get the facts, we'll discuss as a council.
Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your work over the last week. I want to thank Councilman Samuel for reaching out to me and putting it on our mind that he was exactly right. Let's try to help the citizens when we can as it relates to leak adjustment. Thank you. The other council members for all of your work and calls of support and so forth. I don't really start wanting to mention names, but, you know, across the spectrum from our EOC to especially the water department, men and women in the water department, public works department, and again, all departments, just working together and to see that again. We saw it after different hurricanes. We saw it during Amelda. We saw it again last week. Just the way that everyone gets along, works together, pitches in, people doing different jobs during an event like that than they're accustomed to, maybe Monday through Friday in their respective other jobs. It was just another example of just exceptional work, inspiring, and, and we, we thank them very much. If you had a couple, you know, Bart Barco, we had Molly, Mike Harris, Tim Ocknechek, Shaquena Nobles, just there's a guy named Troy, Troy Pearson, Daniel Bakker at the water department, you wouldn't even see out there at the plant that they didn't sleep much at all. I mean, they worked really, really hard. And there were some touch-and-go moments, I can tell you, where we had problems that they jumped on and addressed. And Bart and Molly were there with them. And some of us saw them in action, and it was tough stuff for a while. Thank goodness, again, we didn't lose any water going out within the system. And at some points, we thought that could happen. And that would have been, that would have been very, very difficult to deal with. So that did not happen by the grace of God and, and also those employees doing what they needed to do to, some quick fixes. So team effort again. Citizens, we know, went through a tough, tough week. And we work for them. So we're gonna try to do our part to do our job and continue to do our job. And, and it starts with y'all and your support and giving our employees the tools to do their jobs, which you have, whether it's equipment, vehicles. I mean, y'all have been supportive 100% for many, many years, and it makes a difference, you know? If they didn't have the tools to do their job, a lot of that wouldn't have happened last week. So thank you again.
That is true. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Uh, Mr. Manager, I made a promise to an individual, to this employee. I didn't want to get into names or direct that. But until that investigation is complete, how can we protect that employee?
This is just the beginning. I mean, this came to our human resources department. We call it personnel now, Personnel Department this morning. And we'll do everything we can to protect the employee. I think the employee is a part-time employee that's been working for the city for many years. And the city attorney will work with Personnel Department to protect his or her identity. And, you know, I didn't bring this subject up today. I wasn't planning to. Councilmember Gatz went out there with another, again, candidate that's running at large. The video.
This, this is really not appropriate to be discussed right here. It's not on the agenda. It's not councilmember discussions. It is, it, it's getting beyond.
Councilmember.
And, no way. No, wait, wait, wait. No, no.
I would agree with you. If you not, no one even knew that it was you.
I didn't bring it up. You brought it up, Mr. Samuel.
I did not say your name.
No, but I knew what you I knew what you were talking about.
Okay, we're going to discuss this as a council.
Then let's discuss it as a council when it's on the agenda for discussion.
We will, but let me just say this. I totally agree with what you're saying. It's not appropriate. But when you interjected and said it was you, you put it out there.
No, sir. No, no, ma'am.
Because nobody up here, I don't think, even knew who it was. I didn't.
Well, I I know who's being talked about.
We're stopping. We're stopping right now.
We've gone beyond. We're in a discussion that's not on an agenda.
That's right.
But I will say that a request has been made. An investigation will be opened. We will look at it and bring it back to you.
Okay.
From my standpoint, we're in an election season. From my standpoint, I want to say that any self-help, and that's what I would categorize that as, self-help on the part of a candidate, as candidates, it's not your role to go out and enforce sign ordinances, handbills, or any of that. If you see something that you don't think should be the way it should be, call the city clerk. Call me. Sign ordinances, they're all over the city's rights away. They are in violation of state law, not city ordinance, state law. Those signs can't be removed. And it carries a classy misdemeanor penalty that can be enforced in municipal court. We don't do that as a rule. We will call the candidate and say, we've seen your sign. It's in violation. It needs to be removed. Or the city staff will remove the sign and call the candidate and tell them where they can be found. Self-help is not the candidate's responsibility.
Is it self-help to say? Now, why are you continuing to talk about this? It's not on the agenda for discussion.
He's giving a point of information, and it's not necessarily to you. He said candidates. There's a lot of candidates even in the room.
There are candidates here in the audience, and hopefully candidates are watching. Self-help is not the candidate's responsibility.
Self-help would have been if I'd have taken them and put them in the garbage can.
You know what, Councilman Getz, I'm just going to say this because I'm going to get blamed for allowing people to talk about you. Not one person up here knew who Councilmember Samuel was talking about. I certainly didn't. You were the one that interjected and said it was you. So we're not going to go there anymore. If you hadn't done that, I could understand you being upset, but you did that. So we're not going to talk about it anymore until the facts come to the council. But you don't need to talk about it either.
I didn't bring it up.
You didn't bring it up, but no one said your name.
Were you jarred?
No, we're not. I haven't had my comments yet. Do you mind? No one said your name, so don't blame everybody else. If you want to know why it came up, look in the mirror. Okay, so I do have a few things to say because this has been an eventful week. And I'm going to make this a positive statement because I think that our staff, along with everyone that has been involved, has done a wonderful job on this. I had the press calling me saying, what could you have done better? What could your staff have done better? What could anybody do better? You know what? You can always do something better, and you always reflect on a disaster after it happened. And you can always think of some things you could do differently, not necessarily always better, sometimes differently, sometimes better. But I'm just going to say, to be hit with two disasters at one time. COVID was still going on. We were just starting our vaccines. We had just finished our first week of getting the eleven thousand vaccines to our region and the twenty-five hundred to our to our health department to administer. We were just ramping that up when this happened. And so I think of what Mr. Hoffman says, and he said, people are saying, what did the S. Did you do for me? Well, you know what? There's more than just tangible things right now. We have to work together and not point fingers and say, you know what? I didn't lose my electricity. You might have had to boil water, but some people didn't have any water to boil in other cities. There are some cities who still don't have any water to boil and some that are still under boil water notices. Hooray for the city of Beaumont staff and everything that y'all did, and I thank you so very much. Captain Oknacek told me yesterday, we were talking, or Sunday, I think, and he said, I hope someone gives accolades to the Water Department because they busted it getting that boil water notice rescinded, lifted so quickly. Everyone was saying it was going to be Monday or Tuesday. All the self-people that say what they think is going to happen on Facebook. We knew that we would probably get it Sunday, but we're not going to put that out there until we do it. But man, did they bust it to get that done, Bart. And please take that back, and Kyle, please take that back to those employees that did that because that was huge. I mean, to me, in the scheme of things, boiling water wasn't as big of a deal because there could be a whole lot worse. We've seen it. We know. But to a lot of people, it's very important, and it was important to our restaurants, too, because they've already suffered with COVID. And then, you know, then they have to close because of this if they don't have the ability to follow the guidelines. And so I just want to thank everyone involved. As far as three-one-one, those people, you would not believe how many calls they were trying to take. And we did add to that staff, but there would not have been enough people for us to answer those calls. We could not have hired enough contract employees. And I think the council would probably question it if we just say willy-nilly, we'll hire as many people as we need so someone doesn't have to stay on hold, when we were constantly saying there is a three-one-one app, you could report it through that, you could go to the city website, and you could report it through that, and you didn't have to wait on the phone. And in addition to that, there is, there was put forward a self-damage assessment app through our website so people could do their self damage report. We put that out in the media. People said, well, you know, I don't get my news on Facebook, but then someone else says, well, I only look at Facebook. Well, you know what? We sent tweets out. We did robocalls. We sent press releases out to the news stations, both print media and video consistently. We had two people working on our Facebook pages. They were overwhelmed. We put things out over and over and over again. So what I would ask, if we have this happen again, and there is another mayor sitting up here, I would hope that people would take responsibility for looking at this stuff and trying to trying to find out what's going on before you criticize. You know, because there were a lot of people working long and hard, and you might think in the back of your mind, well, that's what I pay my taxes for. Well, guess what? Everybody that was trying to work toward getting us back to where we needed to be, they pay taxes, too. And so let's just remember how we need to work together on this. I cannot believe that we got that boil water notice lifted on Sunday. Our lab. People don't even know that. I'm not going to go into that because then somebody will be saying they made our lab happen, but anyway, so the three-one-one, three-one-one app, website, email, self-damage, boil water notice has been lifted. The shelters. A lot of people don't realize that part of emergency management is that we work with partners. And we have people in there that are on the phone all day, working toward partnering with organizations and churches to provide shelters for people who need a shelter. We had a couple of shelters that I understand weren't half-full. So we did provide that service for those citizens that needed it, the ones that wanted it. We had our police department was riding around and asking people, you know, that were possibly homeless if they wanted to go to a shelter because there was absolutely space available in two private shelters and one nonprofit. I'm going to make sure I don't forget anything. Okay, and with that said, I want to, and I've asked, and you brought this up, Councilmember, the leak damage assessment will be mailed out, you know, to the citizens. But also, this is the homepage of our Facebook, I mean, sorry, of our website. And if you look at the top three blocks, it's all about COVID because that's what, you know, we've been working on. However, right up here above it, at the very top, in the blue, and there's one up here in the red, it says, winter weather updates and information. Click here. If you lose it, if you don't receive it, this will be posted there tomorrow. Council needed to see it first. Okay, that will be posted in the morning. Also, on that winter weather, remember, we're talking COVID, and we're talking winter weather. We have two different things going on. We've got CARES Act going on for COVID, and we've got SBA Financial Assistance for the storm, for the ice storm. So if you click on that also, you will find the SBA Financial Assistance information, both in English and in Spanish versions, for residents and businesses impacted by the recent winter storm on our and it will also be on our social media pages. It's easier to look at the website because, as you know, social media rolls, and you might post some, it might be way at the bottom, and you got to scroll and look for it. That's one of the things I had people complain about, is that when you put it on Facebook, you got to keep posting it because then people write, and then you can't find it. Well, everything that we put on Facebook is also put on our website. So you can look here for winter storm. You can look here for COVID. So if you don't know, the president and the governor did sign for the SBA, or the president signed for the SBA Financial Assistance, which is basically FEMA two. And so there will be assistance available for people who did suffer damages that don't have insurance, but it'll explain it all as we get it. We don't have everything right now, but we will have English and Spanish versions. And part of it is already up there. If you look right now, you're going to find it. So our Facebook link is facebook.com/bomontTexas, and our website link is bomontexas.gov. That information will be on there. And but I just want, again, to thank everyone that was involved in this. I've been through more disasters than I want to remember, and this is one that we've never experienced before, at least not recently. I think we had we had a ten-degree, I think, or a nine-degree in nineteen ninety-seven, but it was only a couple of days where this lasted several days, which made it even worse. So I just want to say, you if our employees that are working so hard read Facebook, it would be very disheartening for them. And I want to tell y'all, there's a lot of people who know what y'all are doing and that you're doing a lot, and you are doing a lot for the citizens out there. And many of them, the silent majority, so appreciates it. So thank y'all so much. With COVID, we did not, we were not able to get the report out every day, but we did put this out today, or yesterday, sorry. A hundred and thirty-three confirmed cases for that week, which was the thirteenth through the twenty-second, which averages about thirteen a day. That does bring us out of the COVID high hospitalization area. We are not in that anymore, so therefore the restaurants can go back up to seventy-five percent, et cetera, et cetera. The governor has not relaxed the mask rule. It's still in effect, and some of the other rules are still in effect. However, we are no longer a high hospitalization area, so that does affect some of the businesses, certainly the restaurants, and I believe bars, too. I'm not going to be a lawyer and tell you what it says. You're going to have to look at it. So we unfortunately, though, did have eight deaths during that week, all with underlying health conditions. So our first week of vaccines, our first full week with having as many vaccines as we need, has gone very, very well. I want to thank, again, the IT department, Bart, and your group for establishing the portal that's being used throughout our region. And we're adding more to it every day, and it's getting better and better where you can search and find things. And if people go to vaccine.bomontexas.gov, they can register, and they will get a phone call or an email or a text. And I am hearing nothing. Sheri Almar, Kenneth, thank y'all so much. I'm hearing nothing but rave reviews about how smooth it's going at the Health Department. I mentioned this last week, that we're hoping that we can keep it there and not have to move to a bigger facility because it's working so well, and we have the right refrigerators there to do what we need to do. But everyone that's been there, I even got a text this morning from somebody that had their second one. They said the second one was just as easy as the first one. And so kudos to our staff at the Health Department, too. And for our staff to handle two natural disasters at one time in our Health Department, in our EOC, in our Water Department, in our streets and drainage, in our administration. And I know I'm going to forget somebody, but y'all know trash, even trash. They were picking up, you know, two days late, but they were picking up because we couldn't have them out on the streets during the ice. And the staff that works here, everything just really came out better than I could have ever expected. In the beginning, there were rumors out again about we were going to turn the water off, that we lost our water. That never happened. I want to reiterate that again because that's still being said. Beaumont, Texas did not lose our water. We had low water pressure because of breaks that we talked about earlier today, and that's the bottom line. And anybody that says otherwise is just not telling the truth. So please, you know, I don't even think people realize when they put things like that out in social media how many people it takes to combat it and to and to get the word out that that's not what's happening because it just goes viral. And but we have people that know how to handle it, and they did, and we got it squelched, although sometimes that doesn't always help, but anyway. I'll stop, but I'm just very excited about how we're handling COVID, how we're handling our ice storm. I'm not excited about the events, but I'm very excited about the handling of it. And I just want to say, city staff, don't read, just work. Don't look at that stuff because you did a good job. Thank you so much. Yeah. And I did read the executive session, so we will now recess into executive session. Thank y'all for coming.